Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our October 21st, 2020 regular meeting of the school board in our work session. Board, accept or modify the agenda?
I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Action agenda. Purchase temperature systems, Mr. Mitchell, consent.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Was the first action to accept or modify the agenda?
I'm sorry, it was my mistake. I did the consent agenda instead of...
Oh, you're right, Ms. Valentine. Accept or modify the agenda?
I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Valentine. Mr. Mitchell, purchase temperature sensing systems?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Anyway, we're here today asking that you guys approve the purchase of the temperatures. It's more than a thermometer, it's actually more like a... It appears to be like an iPad, and it's actually mounted in the stairwell of the school bus, and the student would view it at two feet of that unit, and it would take their temperature on their forehead based on infrared scanning. It's pretty straightforward. I attached the documents with the pictures of it and whatnot. Questions?
I got on the company's website the other day and just trying to figure out how it all operated, and I had some questions that I referred to Dr. Ballinger, he answered them for me. I was questioning whether they could also be scanned on the arm or the wrist for their temperature, and I was concerned about... Their website said that they had facial recognition software, artificial intelligence, and mask recognition software, and I wanted to make sure we weren't getting into that.
We're not, we're not.
I guess, Mr. Mitchell, we can use this year around even when COVID's gone?
Yes.
Like flu season?
Absolutely.
Typical flu season?
We can also integrate it to our rally software and actually use it as a student counter. So that gives us a really accurate, kind of a secondary check of how many students were on that bus that day, number of students on, number of students off, AM, EM, so.
So it will end up being a long-term use, will it?
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mitchell? Have a motion.
I move that the Warren County Public Schools purchase 50 intelligent temperature sensing systems for the installation on school buses from Gatekeeper.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Mr. Mitchell?
Why?
It's your show. Vehicle bus camera system.
That's correct. Our current video system for our school buses was purchased in 2013. The current three-camera system is having repeated hard drive and viewing failures. The proposed system has five cameras and is capable of expansion and additional technologies to be added in the future. Additionally, the system will allow for accurate data to be collected for contact tracing in the event that a COVID outbreak should occur in a school system vehicle. The camera system will allow us to determine where students are sitting if mitigation strategies are in place. The viewing capabilities are far superior than our current abilities. The request is to upgrade the camera systems in the county cars and school buses for anything that's transporting students.
How many days backup do we have on our cameras?
It's a mounted hard drive, so it's not a specific day. So if it's a route that's relatively short, we might end up with a month, month and a half. If it's a longer county route, we might only have two weeks. This will be almost three times the amount of data, so much larger system. And it's an expandable system as well.
We get a discount on any of this since you linked the scanner device with a camera with the temperature devices?
Mr. Valentine helped me actually make sure that we were able to purchase these KIDIS programs, and we actually got a 5% discount on both packages.
Any other questions for Mr. Mitchell? Excuse me. Do you have a motion?
I move that the Warren County Public Schools purchase 45 less camera systems and 15 car camera systems from Gatekeeper for the sum of $120,255.99.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Purchasing increased bandwidth, Mr. Grant.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We currently have broadband at... We purchased broadband from Shentel at 1 gigabit per second, and we're asking to increase that due to the needs of the virtual learning for teachers and students, as well as the need for the content filter to filter out content for the students on the network. So we're requesting an increase from 1 gigabit to 10 gigabits per second, and the total cost of the increase would be $38,400. This would still be through Shentel, and we're... The cost of it will come, or the amount will come out of the CARES coronavirus relief funds, and we had already bid the contract through E-Rate, so this is still within that range of bidding. Do you have any questions?
Once we get through this hybrid learning and hopefully all kids back at school, are we going to continue to need this?
Yes, yes. What we're going to do is, the E-Rate process starts about in the spring, so we're going to go ahead and apply for, and when we get that, we get 70% discount off of the E-Rate, so it'll be highly... It's a discount in that the government FCC is paying for the other 70%, while we just pay for 30%. So we just need to get through this year.
So this price is what we will have to pay for it entire year?
Yes, yes. That's a full year of, yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Grant? Have a motion.
I move to allow Warren County Public Schools to increase the network bandwidth to 10 gigabytes per second in the amount of $38,400.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, mobile hotspots, Mr. Grant.
Thank you. So Warren County Public Schools would like to purchase mobile hotspots for two separate... From two separate mobile carriers to provide students with appropriate high-speed internet to homes that do not have high-speed internet access. And when I mean that, sometimes you just only have one carrier at your house, and it might be 15 megabits or 10 megabits. So we're trying to get students... What I'm recommending is that we have at least 15 per student, and we got those numbers out of the... Out of our network. We're just, you know, we watch the numbers, and the average student that is watching, you know, doing their Google Meets and doing their work, they're averaging about 15 megabits, some a little under, some a little above, but this should take care of it. So the purchases of these devices would, and services, would come out of the CARES Gears funds, and so it's a monthly cost per device, and it's just like your phone bill. So the T-Mobile Sprint is $20 a month, and then $22.11 for the AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T charges a one-time fee for the device, and then T-Mobile does not charge for the They're both bid out of the fee to contracts, so you have any other quest... Any questions?
This take care of all our students?
This will take care of, so I'd say about 10%, 15%, somewhere around there.
And the rest of our students are able to get?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We've already got some out, so the... Those that have said that they're having problems, we'll try to give them some hotspots. So this is just four additional ones for those that are, you know, as they're moving along, they're realizing, hey, you know what, my internet speed's just not fast enough, let me try one of these, and more than happy to help them out.
Any other questions, Mr. Grant?
I think you just said this and I missed it, but it will... The cost of this will fluctuate based on need, right, the students that need?
Right.
Okay.
Right, 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 yeah, so, yeah. Anything else for Mr. Grant?
I move that the purchase of mobile hotspots in the amount not to exceed $92,350.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Grant.
Thank you.
Purchase of math and science textbooks, Mr. Fox.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We would like to provide digital textbook access and additional textbooks for our students. Due to mitigation strategies, our former standard operating procedure of having classroom sets of textbooks is no longer an option. Therefore, we would like to have the digital access component. Therefore, we would like to be able to provide textbook access to our students by digital means. We also have textbooks that do not have the digital access component and need to purchase additional textbooks to ensure accessibility. Warren County Public Schools believes in equitable access to learning for all students, and this will help us to ensure equity within the county. I'm here to answer any questions. Also with me tonight is Dr. Justin Maffey, our STEM coordinator. He will also help with any questions that you have.
Mr. Fox, if I'm understanding this correctly, once we get everything that's driven by a computer and the students come back to school whenever that may be, we wouldn't physically have to have textbooks in the classroom because they're all having desks.
I would say that is 90% correct. I'm sure that we still have some parents that may choose to have a textbook, so I think we'll have classroom sets.
Right.
And we also may have students out in the county that can't access the internet, but by and large, this would be a digital textbook that everyone would use.
Okay, good. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Fox?
It works the same as a textbook. Once you buy the access to it digitally, then that's the school's...
Yes, yes. You'll see that in the bid proposals for the science textbooks, it's a one-year, a one-year purchase, and then for one set of math books, it's a five-year license, and one is a seven-year license. But yes, it is yours for that amount of time.
Anything else for Mr. Fox? Do you have a motion?
I move that we purchase digital textbooks for Math 6, 7, 8, Algebra 1, Algebra 2, Geometry, Calculus, Science 6, Physical Science, Anatomy, and Physiology.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Thank you.
2020 Textbook Review Committee, Ms. Rubisil.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Because teachers' instruction has had to change so drastically in recent months due to the impact of COVID-19 and the switch to hybrid and virtual instruction, it is the desire of our central office instructional staff and elementary administrators to review our adopted math textbook series prior to the normal adoption cycle to ensure our teachers have access to the most appropriate materials for math instruction for both in-person and virtual students. According to our textbook adoption policy, the school board must approve a committee to review potential textbooks. Attached or linked in the agenda item, you'll find a list of proposed math textbook review committee members for your consideration, and you'll see that the review members would have central office instructional staff, elementary principals, and teachers from each school at various grade levels. Are there any questions?
I don't know. Do you have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the members of the proposed textbook review committee be approved as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Rubisil.
Thank you.
Update on Anthem, Blue Cross Blue Shield, and Valley Health.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This evening, I'd like to take some time and just update you on the Anthem and Valley Health renewal situation that we're either aware of from information that we've shared or information perhaps that you've read through the media. Currently, Anthem and Valley Health are sort of at an impasse negotiating rates for their new contract. We have renewal rates, obviously, with our insurance and lots of type of things, so there's other... There are other things that occurred prior to this, and this is one of those. This happens as far as their renewal process. Both parties, obviously, in any negotiation comes to the table to present their amounts and then the other town or so forth, and then when we get to a point where there's a disagreement or those type of things, we call that an impasse for us, and that's sort of where we are at this time. Valley Health has sent a termination letter actually to Anthem, effective at the first of the year, and Anthem then now responds back to some negotiating and those type of things. But with their negotiation, that affects quite a few people in our area. It not only affects our school division, but it also affects everyone pretty much in Northern Shenandoah Valley who participates in Anthem and who are being served by Valley Health. Roughly, that's about 40,000 people that that will affect. We have roughly 750, 749 full-time employees and so forth who are eligible for insurance, and around 513 or so of our employees take our insurance, and we have Anthem, and we have that with what's called a local choice. The local choice has been very good for us over the last few years, and the last two years alone, we have seen a decrease in our rates by 9%. Now, that is sort of really uncommon in today's world with health rates and those type of things. We have had a year or two, they are previous, that were quite high, but under certain circumstances, insurance companies obviously are not designed to lose funding and lose money, so somewhere it's taken up. What I want to do is to kind of just touch a little bit more on maybe a Plan B or something that we may be running into, and what would January 1st look like if there was still not an agreement signed between Anthem, Blue Cross, and Blue Shield? Because that would not only obviously, as I said before, affect us, although that's why we're here this evening to discuss, but it affects everyone in our area that has Anthem. Anthem is a very strong insurance company in this area, and Valley Health has a pretty solid lock on a lot of our health physicians and those type of things in the area. And when I say they have a lot, a lot of people participate as part of the Valley Health systems, and I'm sure that that has some advantages for those parties as well. Our year of our plan, we start our plan year on October 1st. We're in October plan, we go from October 1st to September 30th. There's really normally two plans, those who start July 1st and those who start October 1st. So we have just started into our plan year just a month or just this month, and we went through open enrollment and those type of things prior to that. But coming around to January 1st, if this agreement was not reached, that would put our people who use the Valley Health, not if they use Anthem who's not affiliated with Valley Health. If you have Anthem and you're not using the Valley Health network and so forth, your insurance remains the same. There is no... Because it's really the negotiation between Valley Health and Anthem. So if you had a physician and so forth that was not part of Valley Health but still had Anthem insurance, then this would not affect that. It's just if you were sent to one of the Valley Health providers, that's where this would be affected. And when you are in-network, which means that basically that there is an agreement between those two parties, and that your benefit from your insurance is much greater because you're... These are people who accept your insurance, and that's in-network. Their benefit is much higher. So in other words, for the subscriber, and I know some of this is just basic knowledge, but I just want to have at least a foundation to lay this on, that your benefit is much greater. If you go out of-network, you still do have some insurance coverage, but it's less because that physician or that facility is not participating with that carrier, which is Anthem. Mr. Ed White is with me here this evening, and he's the Senior Vice President for McGriff Insurance out of Winchester, and he works actually as a consultant with our county as well with their benefits and has for some time now, and I've relied upon his expertise most definitely recently in those type of things. And I'm going to have him present to you in a little bit more detail, but there's... Before he does that, a few other things that I just want to share is that January 1st, we would be looking at out-of-network for those people who went to Valley Health facilities, and that would be... That would be much more costly. We really need to make sure, I think, to best serve our employees, is that we need to have at least a Plan B, you know? Obviously, the best scenario is there's an agreeance, an agreement that occurs between Valley Health and Anthem. Perhaps that's not something we have a lot of control over. Perhaps as a board, one thing that we could do is we may, and I believe the town has done this perhaps, to send a resolution to both Valley Health and Anthem just to stress our concern in regards to the situation and those type of things. I'm not sure there's too much else we can do other than at least voice our opinion, and hopefully, to some degree, that may help with some of the cost figuring that they go through. In order to have a Plan B, I think we almost need to look at what else is out there. I know we're happy with our insurance. I know that we're happy with what we've experienced, and Blue Cross Blue Shield has been very strong in this area, but we really can't expect our employees to go such a long period of time and just be continued out-of-network without at least doing some due diligence to see what else possibly is out there. And Mr. White will describe and go over some of that procedures. We would do an RFP, a request for proposal, to go out to different insurance carriers. Winchester has done that, and Shenandoah has done that, and Clark, well, they're going through the process now to see what is available. There is the option of actually presenting a termination letter, and that termination letter would be from our division to Anthem or to the local choice of saying that we, in 90 days, we're going to end up going with a different carrier per se. Within that 90 days, we have a 30-day period of time. Say if we did it November 1st, then by January 1st, you have a 30-day period of time where you can rescind that. You can rescind that termination letter. That's not something we have to do, but with the local choice group, we have to give them 90 days notice if we decide that's something that we want to do, and the longer we wait, then the 90 days just continues to be in front of us and those type of things. It may on the surface feel a little scary to do so, but we're actually in control of that letter, and Mr. White will sort of explain some of that. I had his handout, his presentation that I'll hand out to you momentarily, and Ed will go over some of the information that he has learned between Anthem and Valley Health, and then afterwards will regroup to sort of get some guidance and some questions on what you might feel will be our best route, so I'm going to bring up Ed White at this time.
Thank you, Buck, Chairman, board members, appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Okay. So this presentation we're going to cover, and my apologies to the kids, this is boring insurance stuff, so please forgive me. Something we've been talking quite a bit about over the last two months, and I'll say of recent, really, over the last three or four weeks. So as Buck did a great job in kind of introducing... There we go. So, and again, I think you all hopefully have a copy of this, and my apologies for the wordiness of it. I thought, if nothing else, then you walked away from here and couldn't remember some of the stuff that I mentioned, at least you'll see it in writing a little bit. So we've had, and let me back up and say, McGriff, so you know who we are and who I am. McGriff is a wholly owned subsidiary of BB&amp;T Insurance, or BB&amp;T, it used to be called BB&amp;T Insurance. We kind of went through a name change a couple of years ago. I've been in the Shenandoah Valley since 1990 doing this insurance business and mostly health insurance. I worked for Blue Cross Blue Shield for seven years, and actually was at Blue Cross when the local choice program kind of was first initiated, so... But since then, I've been on the brokerage side, kind of helping many municipalities in this region navigate healthcare, healthcare reform, and the options. So when we saw this kind of train wreck that was potentially on the horizon with Valley Health Systems, I can tell you in my experience of 30 years, I've never seen one get quite this volatile. Most times when there's a negotiation between a hospital and an insurance company, they keep it between themselves. They navigate the negotiation, they come back, and you don't even know. At Anthem and Valley Health did this three years ago, we knew nothing about it. So this is unique, that it's kind of become so public. As I talk to the hospital and as I talk to the folks at Anthem, I would say, I'm not getting a good feeling, and I think Buck has mentioned that he's been on calls with the hospital, several folks, probably some board supervisors even been on calls. It's in watering it down to kind of the simplest reason, Valley Health wants higher payments from Anthem. Anthem doesn't want to pay them that higher payment. It's kind of that simple. You might say, well, why wasn't Anthem just pay Valley Health the increase that they're asking for? Well, I think from Anthem's perspective, if they do it here, then they're going to be asked throughout the state, and they own, actually, Anthem owns Blue Cross Blue Shield plans in about any other state, so it will be a national thing that they will have to deal with. So there is an impasse today, and I don't see necessarily that that impasse is getting resolved by the end of this year. So Buck mentioned it, but just real quickly, the impacts are not small. They roughly figure Anthem covers about 40,000 members in the Northern Shenandoah Valley region, state employees, ULs, or local choice employees, which the school system has for their health insurance, large local governments that aren't part of the local choice program, private corporations. My... If I look at all of the clients that I have, probably two-thirds of the business in this area has Blue Cross Blue Shield for their group coverage. So individuals that have the marketplace coverage, it affects them as well. And any person carrying a Blue Cross Blue Shield card out of state, which is me, I carry a Blue Cross Blue Shield in North Carolina card, I am impacted by this potential situation. So Valley Health tells us that Anthem pays them, or 20% of the revenue comes from Anthem. And probably the biggest question and the biggest issue we've had talking through this is how soon a solution will come. As Buck mentioned, we know that the local choice requires that you tell them 90 days in advance of a termination. Well, that's a long time out. Looking at the timeframe it takes to enroll a group, if you decide Plan B is the way you have to go and we move to a different carrier, that takes 45-plus days to happen. So from the time you say, we're picking this carrier, to the time that effective date starts, it takes about 45 days because there's a lot of communication that has to happen with employees, there's the enrollment process, and so there is... The time lag is very difficult and creates a lot of issues with getting ready for a potential Plan B. So some things that are specific to the groups that have local choice, and I would say, most every municipality with the exception of Frederick County and Frederick County's schools have local choice in this part of the state, in the Northern Shenandoah Valley. We mentioned the 90-day notice. Buck mentioned, you do have the ability to, within 30 days of that termination date, say, hey, no, we're going to stay, we're not going to leave. The big thing, and I've got a slide related to this, when we talk about what it would be to be out-of-network or to go to a provider or a Valley Health system provider when you're... When they're not in part of Anthem's network, there's an out-of-network structure of benefits, and we're going to cover that in a second, that your employees have, or the employees of the school system and all plans have. And that's not bad benefits, believe it or not, but the bigger issue will always come back to balanced billing, and I'll put that in an example in the next slide. There's one other piece of the local choice program that's, we just need to know it's there, there's not much we can do about it. They call it an adverse experience adjustment, which basically says, is that if after you leave the local choice, they determine prior to your termination date, if you won't know about it until about six months after, that you had a bad experience. it until about six months after, that you had a bad experience versus the local choice pool in general, they can actually bill you for some of that bad experience that you had, literally six months after you've left. It's a factor we need to know. The groups that have left the local choice over the years, I will tell you, generally that number is very, very small, or zero. It can be zero, but it's another part of the puzzle that is just out there that we can't necessarily put our arms around. So let me talk, and I'm going to move a little bit. Let me talk about balanced billing. So this is, when folks talk about out of network here, and, you know, I understand I've got benefits, this is what it looks like. And this is actually your benefit, or one of the benefit plans that most of the employees of Warren County School are covered under. So let's just put it into an example. We'll say a patient is covered under the local choice Key Advantage 1000, which a lot of the employees, probably half the employees of the school system have, that Key Advantage 1000. Let's say they go to Valley Health System for a knee replacement, okay? We'll say, and this is probably very, very close to being a real charge, we'll say they'll charge $20,000 for that knee replacement surgery, okay? Doesn't matter whether you're in Anthem or out of Anthem, let's say that's what it is, okay? But we'll say Anthem's allowable charge. If you've ever seen an EOB from your insurance company, you see hospital charge, we approved, and then you've got your amount. That approved amount, in this case, we'll say for Anthem for that knee replacement is $15,000, okay? So if that employee today is going to that Valley Health System hospital for care, here's what's going on. You can see there's their benefit for the Key Advantage 1000 is a $1,000 deductible, then they pay 20%, okay? Valley Health writes off the difference between the $20,000 and the $15,000. So they write off that $5,000 difference because they participate, okay? So when the person's going to participating provider, you can see what happens. Their out-of-pocket exposure is $3,800 with that Key Advantage 1000 plan, okay? This is what happens if they go to a non-participating provider. So if come January 1st, Valley Health is not part of the network, and it's not an emergency, and they go to Valley Health Hospital potentially for that knee replacement, again, some rough numbers, but this is kind of how the benefits work. So the out-of-network benefits for that Key Advantage 1000, or is a $2,000 deductible, okay? Not a thousand, you're now in an out-of-network bucket of benefits. After that, Anthem's going to pay 70%, and the employee's responsibility will be 30%, okay? So there's a deductible $2,000, Anthem's paying 70%, and there's the employee's responsibility of that 30% of $3,900. But now, and this is the balanced bill, this is where the hospital can say, we don't participate anymore. And so this difference between what Anthem, what we charge and what Anthem approved, we can bill you for. We have the right to, because we don't have a contract any longer. That's where it gets expensive. And you can see the difference, same surgery, just going to an out-of-network provider. And it can be catastrophic, obviously, for an employee's out-of-pocket exposure. So just, we had a lot of questions on what balanced billing means. You've got benefits out of network, the bigger part is going to be potentially somebody's balanced bill. Okay. So just real quickly, Buck's kind of touched on this, and I'm not going to, I'll leave more time for questions if there is some. We've been watching this coming, we've kind of, as Buck mentioned, there's several other school systems and counties and municipalities that are down the path of already doing RFPs. We've kind of got a structure in place, we know how it's going to go. Carriers that we have access to in this Northern Shenandoah Valley region that have good provider networks beyond Anthem are Cigna, Aetna, and United. It's not like we have a number, but all those carriers, I'm always careful when I talk to somebody that's got a Blue Cross Blue Shield card, and some of them that have had it for forever or for 20-plus years, all of those carriers are quality companies. All of them probably have a 95%, probably overlap match with Anthem's provider network. So we're not talking about people having to switch doctors or go outside, first the hospital participates with all three of those. So there are good choices, we've kind of got them ready to go. They all know the situation that we're dealing with in Northern Shenandoah Valley. They know, they may do a lot of quoting, and this deal gets done, and we don't need them in the end, but we know, and we're getting more and more, I'll say, nervous that Plan B, everyone's going to need to have a Plan B. And it's just a matter of, is that Plan B effective January 1st or February 1st? If you're willing to wait it out, I mean, I think it could be first or second quarter before maybe the two parties can come to an agreement, or longer. I mean, there's nothing saying they couldn't go longer. Just a quick timeline, again, as Buck mentioned, I think the RFP process will obviously slow us down three or so weeks, but we do need to tell the local choice, our intent is to potentially terminate. We're giving you 90 days' notice, that would be for February 1st effective date. You can see, gather information around 1st of November, get the RFP on the street, hopefully have those RFPs back by the end of November to start evaluating. We will already have other municipalities back by then, so we'll kind of hopefully have a good idea of what the landscape looks like. Maybe do some finalist presentations towards the beginning of December, and probably make a decision towards the middle of December. It takes, again, 45 days to really rule this out. January 1st will be our deadline to tell local choice, either we're staying, we rescind our termination, or we're, beyond January 1st, we're committed to leaving the local choice with their, the state requirements on the termination.
So I will take a breath and ask what kind of, what questions you may have. Maybe while I'm asking, breathe.
Thank you, Mr. White. We appreciate your coming and enlightening us and everybody in the audience tonight. I guess, what other carriers does Valley Health currently take? You've mentioned Aetna, I think.
Aetna, Cigna, and United are the, they take others, you know, but they're, they may be Medicare supplement companies, but the big ones that have viable physician and hospital networks are those three, other than Anthem, of course.
Right. So if somebody in the school system stayed with Anthem, they, it looks like the closest by the map you gave us is probably Warrenton or Haymarket, that's within the 50-mile radius.
And Anthem will make allowances for emergencies. I mean, if somebody's, obviously, if you're out of network and you go to the nearest emergency room, they will make allowances for that. Most times, what we're talking about is care that doesn't, that's not emergent, and that you can, you can make a decision to get in the car and travel.
Any questions for Mr. White?
Do we know, do all the other health systems that are listed here have a current Anthem contract? Do we know when that contract is due for negotiation?
No, generally not. We could ask Anthem when they're up for negotiation. Again, I would say this one's unique. Normally, we don't know that these are even happening behind the scenes. Anthem negotiates with the facility, and generally, you're none the wiser. But we could ask Anthem on any of those. Some contracts with some carriers are year-to-year, some contracts are three years, like Anthem's most recent one.
I guess, flip side, do we know when Cigna, United, those are up for negotiation with Valley Health? Because we don't want to switch and run into the same thing all over again.
That question was asked on one of the calls we had with Valley Health on Monday, and their comment was, I think they said they could tell us, but they said they don't have, the reimbursement's not that low for the other carriers as it is for Anthem, and they don't see that there would ever be an issue where they're having to terminate a contract because of the low payment that they're receiving to that. Anthem, obviously, is, the hospital said, their lowest payer, they reimburse them lower than any other insurance company, which we knew, and it kind of translates to lower premiums too. Because, I mean, they're paying the hospital a low figure, means the employees of Warren County Schools hopefully are saving on their premiums, and they're certainly saving on their 20% that they pay in co-insurance.
It says that Anthem's revenue represents 20% of VHS. I'm assuming that's Valley Health Systems' total income?
Yes.
So I wonder what it would be for War Memorial. What percentage does Anthem, because, I mean, you've got county employees, you have the county employees, plus there's probably several other employers around that people carry that Anthem card. So how much money is War Memorial?
It may be higher. I mean, I think in most hospital systems, it probably goes by saying Medicare is a huge payer, because of age. I would venture to say on the private side, private insurance side, Anthem, even though it's only 20%, it's not insignificant, it's probably the biggest private insurance company paying the hospital. But we could ask the hospital what War Memorial is.
How much, how much are you willing to lose? And I mean, I wish I knew the numbers, I wish I knew the difference between Anthem and Valley Health, you know? How far apart are they? Because, you know, if we got to do a letter in 90 days, which I hate to have to do, simply because we didn't cause this problem. I mean, we're just the poor folks trying to have health insurance for all of our employees. But it's kind of like you're, in my opinion, being forced to do something, and I don't know what the right decision is. And I appreciate your candidness and your honesty. And Buck's wherewithal to bring it all, throw it out on the table and try to educate us, so.
So many of the doctors in this area too, over the past few years, have become employees of Valley Health.
Yeah.
Sorry, that affects not just...
They are part of this arrangement as well. If Valley Health goes not participating, the doctors do as well, those that are run by Valley Health.
Any other questions, Mr. White?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I would like to add, Mr. Chairman, that I would like to just have some sense of guidance or recommendation, or some sort of, is it fair to ask that if we could start an RFP to go at least to find what is, what's out there?
I think we need to...
I think we have to have, we have to have a Plan B. We have to be able to have something to fall back on. No one really wants to make these moves because simply, to some degree, it's almost a game that everyone is playing of that, if not now, when? If not, if not the approval of the rates are now, when will that be? Will that be December 31st? Will that be tomorrow? Will that be March? But, and as I mentioned earlier, and I shared with you two documents there, one is fresh off the press from today of the number of participants that we have of our employees in each plan, and what they're taking. And as you recall, in the last few years, we've put a tremendous amount of investment in our benefits program to get our rates especially down to 1,000, of where they are to be competitive. And the other is a radius, as you mentioned earlier, Mr. Williams, as far as where are some of the participating Anthem facilities and doctors, and where are they located within, as the crow flies per se, distance from here in Front Royal? And as far as a termination notice and those type of things, to have something to go on the 1st, are you comfortable with that, knowing that you would have a 90-day or 30-day opportunity to rescind that? The only, the advantage of doing that that I see is that you start that clock.
If we initiated the 1st, we would have, and they terminate their agreement on the 31st, you have the month of January that now we're out of network within that timeframe.
I think we need to move forward, and the sooner the better. I mean, I don't want to see people caught up with that scenario that was on the screen, excuse me.
Yeah, we don't like January 1st.
No, should have done something. I mean, I don't think there's a right answer, and we don't know where they're really at, but we need to move forward to try to protect our best interests.
It doesn't hurt shock.
No, absolutely not. So I don't have a problem with a resolution that the board...
RFP.
RFP.
And do you want to do, go ahead with the termination agreement?
Yes.
Termination letter?
Yes.
Just come on, Mr. Smith.
What's a board's pleasure on the termination? Let's just kind of get a feel for the termination letter. Everybody?
I'm good.
Everybody good?
It's a ludicrous and ridiculous game of chipmunks.
Yes.
And they're utilizing the lives and the well-being of our employees. Both sides need to understand that, and I hope that they do, and I would hope that they would sit down and make a decision for the best interest of the population that they're covering. We still have to move forward.
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, I don't, I don't think it's fair to play with somebody's life. I just, I don't, I mean, in business, you know, some decisions you make, you're not going to make money on the short term, but you will long term. So I think you have to look at it like that. I'm not going to make money off of every sale I make, but long term, will I be profitable? And I think Valley Health and Anthem, both are strong entities, and they need to understand that. And we've got a lot of people involved in Warren County with both entities. Let's go ahead, I think the board's in favor of the termination letter and to start searching to an RFP.
And just so that it's clear amongst media and those type of things and so forth, is that this is the start of a process. It's not the ending part, you're not, our discussions tonight is not ending that relationship with Anthem. It's, because sometimes it gets out that it's, they terminated on such and such date, let's not confuse that. This is to start a process so that we will have in place a Plan B, and we are in control of when or if we need to rescind the letter.
Right. If we need to carry through and execute it.
Exactly.
Fair enough.
Thank you for your guidance.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next up, the bright side. Elementary report on the start of 2020-21 school year, elementary principals. I don't know how we'd like to take them in order.
You know, they work so great together, so I'm just going to let them have at it. This group works very well together.
They play well.
They meet all the time, they have great conversations, and I think they looked at lunch together today. This is a great group of individuals.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board. So we are here tonight just to give an overview of how things are going so far in the elementary schools with the start of school. So as you know, we have hybrid students that are coming four days a week, and we have some virtual students. And we have a lot of different things that are happening in our schools because of that. So we're each going to touch on a little piece of what the day looks like in our schools now. And for AS Rhodes in particular, we have two teachers who are virtual. So they're not reporting to the school at this time, but they are still providing virtual specials to our students. So one of those, and I do have a student who was going to join me this evening, and I don't think he's made it, they had a family emergency, so they were going to try to get here, but that didn't happen. But we do have four days a week virtual specials for our students. So that virtual teacher is creating lessons, and our teachers are able to take 30 minutes out of their day whenever it fits in, basically, and show that video to their students. So we have art, music, and we also have Mrs. Taylor, who does a Fun Friday. So he was going to share kind of what he thought, and we've gone over this. For art with Ms. Campbell, he said that he really liked that her videos include different art techniques, and give them examples, and walk them through their drawings. And they've done some things like folk art with drawing an animal outline, and then being able to add their own detail to make it look like folk art. And also, another one that they did with the animal was coloring to make it look like a real animal. And he said he really enjoyed that with the wolf, and she went over some 3D shading, and just making it have fierce eyes were his words that he really liked about that art. So, and he said he's not much of an artist, but he still enjoys those types of lessons. And for music, he said he personally likes that a lot. Levi reported that those videos definitely give you more information about the music and music history, and they've been focusing on games and movement and body percussion. So he said it was really cool because they actually use real songs in the background with the body percussion, and he said it just makes everything sound neater, because the students are in the classroom doing the body percussion, and she's playing the music on the video. And at any time, the teachers can pause, rewind, go back, review things, try it again. So he really thought that is working out well in his classes. For Mrs. Taylor and her Fun Fridays, she's done a lot of different things. She's done science experiments, she's done examples with some rhinos to show them what six-feet distancing looks like. She's done science experiments, she's done examples with some rhinos to show them what six feet distancing looks like. And she's even taken some field trips. So she did a flower experiment with food coloring and did kind of like a time lapse video to just go through some of those science SOLs that fifth grade is going over in their class. And he said he really liked that she was able to do that and they were able to see it, and then they were able to do that in their classroom too. But she basically gave them that time lapse video as well on her experiment. And recently, she took a field trip to Wayside Pumpkin Patch, and the lady there did a whole lesson for them about the pumpkin life cycle. And then they did a tour of the pumpkin patch and the farm. And his favorite was a field trip to the fire department. They were able to see all the equipment, see how it's used. Mrs. Taylor had done the fire equipment year, so he said that was, that was pretty funny. And if you know Linda Taylor, her excitement definitely adds to those videos. She's really enjoying that. So he just really is, I think our students are enjoying it. It gives our teachers a 30-minute kind of break. They're able to have the kids do something that's fun, enjoyable, and it gives a little bit of normalcy to their day to still be able to have that time. Any questions?
No, Mike?
How many students do you have in AS Roads that are totally virtual?
We have about 70 that are virtual. So for us, it's about 25% to 27% that are virtual. So we still have 175 in the building. And those specials are also available to our virtual students. So they're posted on Schoology, and so those students can access them at any time as well.
Anything else? Thank you so much.
All right, next.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Members of the board, Dr. Ballinger, Mr. Ballantyne, I bring you greetings, and I also bring you thanks, but better than that, I bring you a student that you need to get to know. So I'd like to invite up my student, Brently Grenble. Brently is a fourth grader with me at E. Wilson Morrison Elementary School. His mom, Jennifer, is here tonight, so I want to say thank you to you for bringing him tonight and for being a great parent. Appreciate you. And we have not been able to have a traditional recess period or physical education due to the requirements that we have in health guidelines. So I invited Brently to come tonight, and he's prepared some information to share with you about what we do instead. And when he's finished, both of us are glad to take questions. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brently Grenble. I am in fourth grade student at E. Wilson Morrison Elementary School here in Front Royal, Virginia. My principal, Mr. Goodwin, is here with me tonight, and so am my, so is my mom. Mr. Goodwin asked me to talk about what PE is like this year during COVID. Instead of having PE like we normally do, we go outside each day for 20 minutes for movement breaks led by a PE teacher during our movement breaks. We, for our warmups, do 10 jumping tacks, 10 pushups, and then we stretch for 10 seconds. My favorite thing we do during movement break is pace your test. Thank you for inviting me to speak tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for Brently or for me?
Questions?
That's what you're going to do when the weather gets a little bit colder.
What do you think we ought to do when the weather gets a little colder? Not sure. I'm sure we'll move inside, but it has been a great opportunity for us to remain active. It gives an opportunity for them to move and, of course, exercise their brain. And we do more sitting than normal just with the guidelines that we have in the schools. So I appreciate our PE teacher, who really leads that movement break each day. And the classroom teacher, they're very creative. They incorporate a lot of the physical education standards into that. 20 minutes a day that every class gets to go outside. But I really invited him because I asked the PE teacher, which student do you think enjoys that movement break the most and would be able to come and talk in front of a group? And this is the young man that she chose, and I think he did a wonderful job, so thank you. I'm so proud of you. Good job.
Absolutely.
I was in the front row. Good evening.
Good evening.
So one of the hurdles that we had to overcome is trying to figure out how to get our students to school and keep them socially distanced. So we thought and thought, many questions. How are you going to keep new kindergarten students six feet apart in the elementary school setting? So I brought Brennen Wood, who is a fourth grade student at Reston Jeffries, to talk a little bit about how we socially distance at Reston Jeffries.
Hi, my name is Brennen Wood, and I'm in fourth grade at Reston Jeffries Elementary School. I'm here to talk about social distancing and what it looks like at our school. Through our school, we have green paw prints like this that help us know where to go. When kids get off the bus or out of their car, they know to follow the paw prints into school and to their classrooms. Outside, there are the same paw prints to help us social distance during recess. One positive thing about social distancing is that we are able to come to school to learn and to see our friends instead of learning at home on the computer. But one negative thing is that we aren't able to hug our friends or be near them like last year. Thank you so much, and have a great night.
Any questions for Brennen and Brenna?
Any questions?
No questions, but I want to say I'm getting old because I remember both of these kids' moms when they were.
Oh.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nikki Tottenberger. I'm the principal at Hillard Barber Elementary School. And Hillard Barber is one of the schools this year that we have our fifth grade at one of the middle schools. So we thought what we would do is have a student come and let you know what it's like spending their last year of elementary school at the middle school. So I have DJ Maybe, and DJ's mom and dad couldn't be here, but granddad was able to bring him. So DJ's going to share some pros and cons about fifth grade and middle school.
Hi, my name is DJ. I am a fifth grade student at Hillard Barber Elementary School. I am a hybrid student this year, which means I am in the class for four days a week. Being a fifth grade student due to COVID-19, my class is actually at Warren County Middle School rather than the elementary school. I am here today to share some thoughts on what it is like as a fifth grader already at the middle school. Some pros about being at the middle school. We get to go on the track, there are stations and fridges, which is different. We already know what it'll be like when we get here as middle schoolers, so we won't be as shocked. The cafeteria food is a little bit better. The classrooms feel bigger. Some cons about being at the middle school. The building is a lot bigger, and I don't know where many things are because we cannot go explore. We did not get to finish our last year at A. Shelby, which is sad. We are missing out on traditional fifth grade activities. There are no opportunities to say goodbye to previous teachers. We don't get to play on a playground like actual kids. Thank you for listening to my pros and cons list. Have a great night.
Any questions for DJ?
Any questions for DJ? Thank you, DJ. Great job.
Good evening. My name's Denos Pearleng. I'm the principal of Leslie Plax Kaiser Elementary School. And my portion of this evening is to talk about the day and the life of a virtual student. At LFK, we have about 40% of our population is virtual, so a pretty large population. I'm going to show you some examples from a younger elementary perspective and then an older elementary perspective. So I'll show you some examples from a first grade virtual-only class, and then I'll invite up my guest this evening, who is an older elementary student. So our elementary students and teachers are using a program called Schoology as their learning management platform. And this is where teachers are housing all of their instructional content. Okay, it'll load up for us here. All of the instructional videos and the assignments that, I do not have permission to cite two media objects. Welcome to the, one of the cons of virtual instruction, to kind of fly by the seat of your pants sometimes. So we'll show you what we are allowed to show you here. Mrs. Davis is the teacher that I'm hoping we'll be able to see. She is one of our two dedicated first grade virtual-only student, teachers. We have so many virtual first graders that we had enough to have two entire classrooms of virtual students. And Mrs. Davis is one of those teachers. Honestly, all of our virtual teachers and our in-person teachers, they're doing such a fabulous job this year. It was impossible to narrow it down, but we tried to pick one, a great example of early elementary and one later elementary. So if we can go to the second, I want to have a clicker here first. Okay, this is the slide that students see when they first log on. This is Mrs. Davis's homeroom class. And you'll see in the middle, it looks like the blackboard in your classroom or your whiteboard. So students will see what their morning work is, what they do when they first come into the classroom. On the right-hand side, there's some helpful information, that classroom information at the bottom. In the center is the link to their Google Meet. So whenever they log in, they have one place to go. They can make one click, and it takes them directly to their Google Meet. And then on the left-hand side at the bottom are links to their individual class subjects. And they're all color-coded. As we know, at first grade, we have varying degrees of readiness to read, and some of our kids are readers, and some of them are getting there. So we have them color-coded so they know where to go. This is an example of Mrs. Davis's reading class. So when I click on reading, it'll take me to her reading classroom. So in the center, you'll see the days of the week. The students will click on whatever day of the week that is, and that will take them directly to their lesson for the day. On the right-hand side, you'll see their high-frequency words. These are words that they will be studying all throughout the week, as well as their spelling words. And hopefully, I'm going to cross my fingers that the short video clips will show you how engaging virtual instruction can be and get kids actively involved in their, in their learning.
But are Brently going to be able to make us smarter? Follow all of the Davis's pumpkin on your screen. Our first word is dipped. Say dipped. What do you think dipped means? So dipped means if you dipped something, you put it in another thing and took it out quickly. So since your house has a little cup and I have a spoon, so I'm going to dip my spoon in and pull it out to eat whatever would be in my cup. All right, kids, our next word is gazed. Say gazed. So you gaze at something, you've looked at it for a long time. So I want you to gaze at something that's in your house, maybe it's a flag or a clock or a picture. And I just want you to look at it for a few minutes and gaze at it. Great job. You were able to gaze at something.
So those are called their power words for the week, and these relate directly to their reading lesson for the week. And she does a great job of getting students engaged. What you're seeing is her video that she shows for those students who are not able to join the live meets. They have access to these videos at any time that's convenient for their family. And there should be another section of this video.
Boom. Okay, we have a new set of high-frequency words that we're going to learn. We're going to do this data science. We all say it together when we say it, okay? Let's have, I want you to get some movement with it. So when Miss Davis says it, I'm going to point to the word. And then when we all say it together, we'll point two names to the word. Then when it's just your turn to say it, I want you to jump when you say the word, okay? Let's start. Miss Davis, dip. Everyone dip. You say. Here we go. Miss Davis, live. Everyone live. You say. Miss Davis, uh. Everyone uh. You say. Miss Davis, our. Everyone our. You say. Miss Davis, what. Everyone what. You say. Miss Davis, what. Everyone what. You say.
So an idea of how engaging that virtual instruction can be. And if you participate in her live meet, you see, it looks like the Brady Bunch. You've got the little boxes with the kids all there, and the kids, you can see their mouths moving. They are saying this routine along with their teacher, and they're jumping up at the end to say the word with her. They are engaged, and these are some of our younger students. They are very much engaged. All right, now I'm pleased to introduce you to one of our third grade students. This is Mr. Anthony Murray. Anthony, you can come on forward. Anthony is in Mrs. Kanesha's virtual class, and I'm going to have him talk to you about his experience as a virtual student.
A life as a virtual student is you have to wake up at 9:00 a.m. and get on your Google Meet. And then after your Google Meet, you have to get onto Schoology and do your schoolwork. At 12:30, you have to get on a Google Meet and do some work with your teacher. After the Google Meet, you can do your schoolwork if there's some schoolwork left over.
All right, Anthony. Thank you. What do you think about being online? Do you like it?
I like it.
Okay, good. It's working well for you?
It's working very good, and I like it.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Any questions for Anthony?
It sounds like you have to be pretty disciplined to do the different steps of each day. Do you find that hard to do, or is that something that has become routine for you?
It's something that's become routine for me.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
All right, unfortunately, it looks like some of our other video links are not going to work, but I can show you some screenshots here. So this is what Anthony's classroom looks like. This was today's slide when they logged in because today was a virtual day. You'll see Mrs. Kanesha updates the virtual announcements each day. You'll see on the left, there is a show and tell jar. The students can earn incentives by participating in the classroom and the coursework, by completing their assignments. And that jar fills up with those goldfish. And if they earn, if they get the goldfish jar full, they're able to do a show and tell. And believe me, that is extremely motivating for students. They want to show you things that are exciting to them in their homes. And you'll see on the right-hand side, there's the Google Meet link, just like in the first grade class, as well as a direct link to email the teacher. The teachers are very responsive to students during the day, as well as during their office hours in the evening that are scheduled, where they are available for assistance directly with students and families. This is an example of what a daily checklist looks like. It's laid out really easy for students and families to know exactly what they're expected to do during the course of that day. It's just, it's very helpful with developing that routine that Anthony was talking about. And this can show you what their, what their daily schedule looks like. This is pretty consistent from day to day, what they do. They have a morning meeting as a group from 9:00 to 9:10, and then they do a live reading instruction right after that. That live instruction will lead them directly into their independent work, where they have an opportunity to practice the skills that they just learned together. They have lunch and activity time, then they come back together for another class meeting, a midday checkup, and then some live math instruction and time later on to do the independent work with math. This is a really neat way that she has things set up. Again, when you click on the day, it'll take you to a list of all of the students' work that they need to do. And I circled some of the items, and she has it set so that you must view the item. And you would earn a little, there are green check marks next to that item. So when a student completes or clicks on and fully does all the tasks in each of those areas, that green, that check mark turns green, letting the teacher and the parents and the students know that they've completed that section. And just like those goldfish, kids are earning those green check marks. They earn a certain number of green check marks, and they are able to earn an incentive as a class or individually. And something Mrs. Kanesha does that's really unique is she kind of embeds or hides like secret questions in some of her instructional videos. And she'll say, if you can answer this secret question by sending me a message with the answer, you will earn an extra green check mark. So the kids are even more motivated to be participating in those instructional videos. I'm not sure if they'll work, but we'll give it a try. All right, those were instructional videos, just to show you an idea of the vocabulary, the similar routine, but just what it looks like for our older students. Can I answer any questions, or can Anthony answer any questions for you?
Students are navigating this technology pretty well. I'm kidding. How are the parents doing?
Just like our students. Murray, can you answer that?
It's pretty simple. The first week or so, it was a learning experience for the parents as well as the students. But just like the students are learning, we had to learn right along with them. So any glitches that happen, the students are pretty much easy to work through themselves as to where we don't really have to step in unless really needed.
Thank you.
Any other questions I can answer for you all?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's it. I'll tell you what, we'll give you a minute if the parents would like to take their youngsters out. And principals, if you wanna leave, we'll let you do it. Thank you so much for coming tonight. It was a great presentation. I love to see the excitement. Have a good evening. Wow. Next up...
A lot going on.
Next up is drug testing committee members. Over the last several decades, Warren County Public Schools has implemented several programs to help our students become aware of the dangers of alcohol and unauthorized drugs and to provide incentives to avoid alcohol and illegal drugs. The programs provide information to help our students understand the immediate and long-term impacts of alcohol and drug abuse. Even with this intervention, drug and alcohol incidents persist. And as a supplement to educational initiatives, many Virginia public school divisions have implemented random drug testing of students as a condition of student participation and specific privileges offered at school. This process of review, development, and implementation will involve parents, business leaders, school administrators, and board members. I ask that one or two board members serve on the committee as we work through this process in determining if we want to provide a random drug testing program within Warren County Public Schools.
I'd be happy to.
Ralph?
Definitely.
Okay. Easy enough, sir.
And we will... We're getting the committee members from the schools right now. And so once I get all of those, and I will send an email out. A lot of our meetings will probably be virtual. Or if you wanted to, you can come to the office. We will try to meet if we can. Sometimes it bodes. But Ms. Shepherd has already been out and pulled seven other school divisions' drug testing policies so that we will, as a group, review those policies, look at what would be in the best interest of Warren County Public Schools, and then develop our policy according to what would best suit our needs. And this would be something that we would work for implementation next year. So next school year. So this would be a development through the rest of the school year.
It's gonna take a while to put all that together. I'm sure. Well, thank you, Ms. Bauer and Mr. Rinaldi, for volunteering your time. We greatly appreciate it. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, Jim. That's why I asked the question. I didn't come up with that.
I would move that Ralph Rinaldi and Kathy Bauer serve on the drug testing committee.
Second.
Oh, it's a favor. It was opposed. Hearing none. Motion carries. Mr. Wells, being so attentive. All right, next up is coronavirus relief funds. We received a SuperTennis memo on October 9th, 2020, and the Virginia Department of Education announced $220.8 million in awards approved by Governor Northam from the Federal Coronavirus Relief Fund, CRF, to each school division and other local education agency. Coronavirus relief funds are provided to states under CARES Act, and a portion is being made available directly to school divisions to help cover costs in preparing for, responding to, and mitigating the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. The CRF Fund awards are intended for costs incurred related to COVID-19 in reopening and operating public schools during the first months of the 2020-2021 school year, but can be used for qualifying costs back to March 1st of 2020. And with this, Warren County Public Schools was... We were awarded $916,598 in coronavirus relief funds. Now, this is a surprise to us, because, you know, school systems, we're not supposed to get, like other counties or cities, they receive sometimes two rounds of funds. We were always told we were only going to get one round. And this second round was really a surprise to us. And so we were excited to get that, because we have a lot of cost in implementing our mitigation strategies and making sure that we have the technologies and the devices and the virtual learning opportunities for our students. So this is helping us in preparing for that. And when we sat down and we worked with principals to make sure on our priority level, student and teacher support was our top priority with these funds. And so we wanted to make sure that we provided the things that we needed for good instruction, quality instruction, to go on within the situation that we're in. Our second priority was safety and mitigation. And so that... Those were the categories that we divided it up to. And we will be able to expend the funds, which have to be received and expensed or on the ledger by December 30th of this year. So we only have a few short months to get all of this done and taken care of. Anything we do not spend, we have to reimburse back to the Department of Education. So, and that was just to inform you on the coronavirus relief funds. And so we will be putting a lot of things forward to help in these expenditures to make sure that we can get it all done by the timeline that we're in. It's a short window, but I know you guys will get it to talk.
It is a short window.
It is. Thank you, Dr. Bauer. Any questions, comments? All right. Meeting adjourned. I don't have it.
Oh, it's out of late. Here we go.
Oh, update AS Road renovation. Sorry, Ms. Shepherd. Mine didn't update when I came in the room.
It's all right.
So I just wanted to... We are towards the end of our renovation at AS Rhodes Elementary School, and I wanted to give you an update on where we were. I have some pictures here. They may be a little difficult to see, but if you look here, and I'll update you on the things that we still have left to do. So one of the things that you'll notice, and I did a couple pictures of this, is the new roof that we did last summer looks fantastic. So we are glad that we did that. The new columns should be in and on the building, probably mid-November. So... And then here, if you look at this picture right here, here's the new front foyer. So when you walk in this door right here, with this new parking lot right here, which has six or seven spaces, I'm gonna count them today, and I did not. But you walk in this door, you walk into this new front foyer, which is a secured entrance. So, which is fantastic. And I think the next slide will show... Here's the new check-in counter, which kind of separates the school secretary from the public whenever they first walk in the door. And then here is the office of our secretaries there at AS Rhodes Elementary School.
And they have a beautiful view from that window.
Oh, it's gorgeous. It is absolutely gorgeous. So if you are stepping out, the picture on your left, that's if you're looking down the hallway to the left. And then the picture on the right is looking down the hallway on the right. And if you'll notice there towards the back, that is a barrier, because LCW is still doing renovation on the other side of that barrier, which will be removed in the next couple of weeks. So we're getting there. But I know that Ms. Bauer and Cheryl were there a few weeks ago, and they commented on how large the building looked, because it's bright and it's light, and they have some really unique things. So I like this a lot. This is a sink that's out in the... You know, it's going into the restroom so that when kids come out, they can wash their hands. We can see that they've washed their hands. And then they get in line, and they're not. They're playing in the water. Our students aren't playing in the water, as they're leaving. The teacher can visualize that they've washed their hands. This is one of our classrooms that was in the original part of the building. And I knew that because it has the hardwood floors. They are gorgeous. Our teachers love the casework that is in the classrooms. I think I have a closer picture here. And the chairs were on the desks. I took the pictures this morning, so they were doing some cleaning. So no students in the buildings on Wednesday. Here again is one of our older classrooms, and here is one of our new classrooms. And the reason I know that is because the floor is VCT tile. Okay, so I do not have a close-up of the casework. But that is one of the things that the Board of Supervisors approved for us out of some carryover funds. So we really, you know, we really need to thank them for all of their cooperation on this project, because we're getting towards the end, and it is great. Here's the library space. This space isn't open yet, but it will be open in the next couple of weeks. So we have new bookshelves in there, and then there's carpet as well. These are the stairs that are, as you're walking into the building from either side, the stairs. This is one of the items that still has... That still needs to be done. The stair treads are coming in, so that picture is not a permanent trend. And then here, this used to be a door, and they've taken the doorway out on this one, and then there's another one around back, and they've put in a window. And it's an office. So I think that one is the school counselor office. And then again, I just, you know, I think the image of the roof has made, you know, the new roof has made a huge difference in the aesthetics of the building. But upcoming events, so our staff that are intermodular units will be moving to the main building on October 28th, which is next Wednesday. November 2nd, we will begin the removal of the modular unit. So they will... It may take a couple of weeks for them to be removed, but, you know, the week of November 2nd, they will be removed. November 9th, completion of the punch list is anticipated. And then mid-November, we'll have the columns right there arrival and installation. End of December, the windows arrive on December 23rd. I am pushing LCW to get those windows installed over winter break. And I know they're gonna try really hard, because they have been a phenomenal partner throughout this. OWPR and LCW have been great partners through this. And when I tell you what the change order number is, you guys are gonna know what good partners that they've been, because it is super low. So, and then roller shades will be installed after the new windows. And the window air conditioning units will be removed at that time as well. So, you know, we are towards the end of the project, and it is... It went really well. Our change order number is less than half of a percent on a renovation, which is unheard of. So I think that... Now, we did do some change orders ourselves. We asked for the HVAC. We asked for the new windows and all of that. But the other change orders, we have limited those to $13,102.
Wow.
So in a renovation, that is... That's fantastic. So we, you know, we really... And LCW, we couldn't have done it without them, because they have been a huge partner in OWPR as well, so. Huge, great partners.
Nice to hear. You know what I mean? Thirteen grand on a project like that, that's...
You don't know, whenever you're on a renovation, really what you're getting into.
Right.
So...
You and your team have done a tremendous job putting this thing together.
Yeah.
That place is beautiful.
Can't wait to see the new windows. So I'm excited about that. I think it'll make a huge difference.
That'll finish it all.
I think the teachers are extremely excited about being in this new building, and they're looking forward to the completion as well. There will be some teachers still out of there... There'll be some moving over the summer as well, because Lori is trying to minimize the number of times her teachers move. So if there's a kindergarten teacher on this side of the building, they'll move to their permanent place over the summer, just so that they're not disrupting students and they're not disrupting staff. So there'll be some additional news next summer. Any questions about the Rhodes renovation?
Question?
I just wanna echo what Mr. Ween said. Thank you for all the work you've put in.
Absolutely.
Staying on top of it.
My pleasure.
Our team has done well. We couldn't have done it without you, and we couldn't have done it without the support of the Board of Supervisors.
Absolutely.
They've been great partners as well. This is as much their project as it is ours.
You're absolutely right. It is.
Thank you so much, Ms. Shepherd. All right. Is there anything else? This list, or on the computer? All right. Meeting adjourned.